Wait on that, I hope they're not under a shooting.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, in light of the fact that this is Patriots' Day, September 11th, I wonder if we could have a moment of silence for the people that were lost on September 11th?
Absolutely. All right, thank you, Missy. I will call to order the school board meeting. I'm just going to start 544 to order. And Claire, will you take your role, please?
Yes, Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lynn.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. Steven Bigassa.
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda tonight?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, our agenda is approved. So tonight, we have reports from the board members and Superintendent Drake. So we'll start with Kirby Anderson.
Okay, 544 Education Foundation, that we have not met since last month's meeting. We will be meeting this Thursday. And the only other thing of significance for the foundation is we will be serving Taco in a Bag on Friday night, right before the football game. So get ready for that. Finance committee has not met. We probably, we're looking at trying to get a meeting together, maybe, maybe this week. That'd be Natalie and Matt and I. We have the WAB limitation report from the state just got it today, so we should get the finance committee together just to look into the WAB. Right now, I was looking, maybe, what time do you get here for finance or for, uh, Outer Pride?
Oh, on Friday?
Yeah, would that work? We'll talk offline.
Okay.
So we'll be looking at a meeting for the finance meeting. And activities has not met, and we do have a meeting tomorrow morning at seven o'clock to talk about such things as admission fees and facilities, mascot, banners and gold chime and credit card usage and things like that. So we'll be meeting Matt and Steve, having a meeting with Superintendent Drake and Ms. Derrick. So that's the bulk of my report unless there's questions.
Any questions for Kirby? All right, thank you. We will move on to Melanie Cole.
Thanks. We had a special ed cooperative board meeting today. And one of the big topics was hiring because it's been difficult to find qualified staff. And so we do now have two teachers for the EBD classrooms. And one just hired today that won't start until October 2nd, but, and both without the appropriate licensure. So we also did a subcontract for somebody to do the curriculum planning that is licensed and has experience. So undoubtedly, just a reflection of the current state of the, state of the marketplace. And, but delightful too that we have found the staff and we have, um, our current director Shannon Erickson's always been really talented with whole people together to fill the positions and qualified people as well. So we have one early childhood special ed teacher position that we just approved today because the early childhood referrals from the kids that are K or zero, four years old have just, or birth to three years, sorry, is just really been exploding in a couple of communities in particular. And the staff can't keep up and they have the time, a mandated state time limit on those. So. So that was that. We have commissioned a study of the cooperative time, primarily at this time focused on the financial aspects of the special education cooperative, what districts contribute as opposed to what they receive from the cooperative. And talked about that today. And also had a discussion topic on whether or not Fergus is still considering doing a cooperative. And just covered that ground again. And so we will see, we're not due to get the outcome from that, um, re, the expertise report or whatever until the end of October. So we'll see about that. And then, um, that was the highlights from that board meeting. And then as far as Region One, Special Education Cooperative, last year, we were about a half million dollars income over budget. It's incredible. He makes a conservative budget, but we have added a couple of features that we provide as services and so they are really, it's going good. We have good staff right now. The director talked a lot about the cyber liability insurance and, and the requirement for dual authentication. But as a provider of educational software to multiple school districts, then the kind of the buck stops with Region One to a certain degree. Each school district can do their own thing. But they, um, we have, uh, focused some attention in particular on cybersecurity and the insurance coverage and the procedures to avoid ransomware, all that other stuff. Not that it's a hundred percent guarantee, but it's really, really on the radar. And then that's about it. Time tracker, 60 schools are on it. And that's about it. Some replacement, that technology stuff means replacement pretty quickly, it seems like. But of course, we have the budget for it. So that's about all that I have. Any questions?
Questions for Melanie? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to Missy Hermes.
Okay, Policy Committee has not met, but Staff Development Committee met just about an hour ago. And we have a new chair for that committee. Krista Simon-Guard is the new chair for Staff Development. And so we were updated on what are the different staff development training days. So one of them is December 1st. And one of the components of that will be the cultural competency training, which is required for teachers to renew their licenses. But also, we're really strongly encouraging non-certified staff to attend that as well. And then the next one was, it was scheduled to be March 8th. So that would have been on, you know, your district calendar, but it's now March 1st. And that will also have a cultural competency training component as well as a number of breakout sessions. And then one thing that Krista's done, I should have mentioned this earlier, is that she's creating a staff development handbook where all information related to that committee can be found by people on the committee and then people maybe that want to be on the committee, et cetera. And, um, which is fantastic. And then also some of those breakout sessions that we were talking about, including project-based learning and ISTI standards, science of reading, socially emotional learning, et cetera, and trauma-informed practices. So, and then we, um, the budget, I think you have that, the document that we'll be looking at later. The budget has been set forth from that committee. And hopefully you'll approve that document that comes out of the Staff Development Committee.
Any questions for Missy? All right. Wellness Committee meeting, next report is my own. The Wellness Committee meeting doesn't meet until the end of September, September 26th. And then the Leantyne grounds has not formally met, but there, there is quite a bit of movement. And I believe Jeff will be touching on some of those pieces in his report. I'll leave that to you. So then we'll move on to Matthew Lynn.
Minnesota High School meeting meets in October around Christmas month. So I have nothing to report.
All right. And then Steven Bigassa.
The Curriculum Review Committee hasn't met, but we do have a schedule. October 16th will be the first meeting. Amelia, Ms. Lamar had said that she's still contacting members of the committee to confirm their participation. So that's why we didn't meet in September. But I think we usually only meet in October anyways. So nothing to report yet.
Thanks. And then Superintendent Drake.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just some thank yous. We had a really smooth start to the school year. We had a wonderful turnout at our open houses. It was a beautiful evening. Also lots of happy faces from the kids to maybe the parents were happiest of all. But our staff was really rolled out the red carpet and was very welcoming to start the new school year out. So appreciate everyone's work from those that were deep cleaning the facility and taking care of the grounds to food service, our teachers, support staff, office folks. Just all of our coaches and advisors starting out the school year. Transportation, it's just been a very smooth start and appreciate everyone's hard work in making that happen. I do want to give a special thanks to Renee and her staff. Our auditors were here on site last week. That's a lot of work gathering. The documents that our auditors request and having all of that organized and ready to go. I did meet with the lead auditor at the tail end of his stay last week. And he was very pleased with the cooperation and preparedness of our staff. That just makes their job and the process a lot easier. So. There'd be some additional documents and some back and forth that still take place as they tie up some loose ends. But for the most part, that work is done and will be processed. And we can expect our audit report presentation sometime in November. We are still looking for a mechanical worker. And then added to the list this week is also a school nurse. So we'll get that out there. And we also have an opening or two in custodial. And we're looking for some aides as well. So if folks out there are interested or know of someone looking for a great opportunity, please have them contact the district office or go online and complete an application. Student enrollment, so this is hot off the presses as of today. Our district enrollment is sitting at 2901. You can see the grade level breakdown. Thanks to Molly, she got me the preschool breakdown this afternoon. 152 is a very nice number for our threes and fours. We're usually about a low 140s. And you'll see in the next slide that we're, brick and mortar, we're basically where we thought we would be. And so I'll talk a little bit about that and then talk a little bit about IQ Academy. So as you look at this, on the table to your left, that's where we projected ourselves to be. And that's kind of how we were basing our fiscal year 24 budget under those projections. The information in, to the right in the green shading is our actuals as of today. So if you look down in the bottom left corner on projected, brick and mortar, we projected an enrollment of 2438. Our actual enrollment as of today was 2432, which is pretty doggone close. There's a lot of stuff that can happen between the end of a school year and the start of another one. And really, really pleased with how that prognostication, I guess you could say, turned out. We're basically right on the money there. Where you see the difference that's affected our total enrollment is on the IQ side. And so the part on the left, the 544, I didn't have time to dig into that. I don't know if that was basically a full-time equivalency for our students. But you can see in the table on the right, we have 469 full-time IQ students at the moment. And then we have 39 part-time students. So when you look at the numbers, 2982 projected to 2901 actual, I'm not taking into account those 39 parcels in that. So it's a little tighter than what you're showing on here. But by and large, the story really is brick and mortar turning out exactly how we thought it would be. And IQ Academy being a little lower than we thought to start. However, this is also very important. I'm not worried about the financial impact at this point because IQ typically starts low and then gains enrollment all the way through the course of the year up to cutoff point in the spring, kind of February-ish. So that enrollment should continue to increase. That gap should continue to tighten and I think we'll be fine. You see especially, the ninth grade is the area where the biggest discrepancy between IQ enrollment was projected and where it's sitting right now. And as students start their freshman year and maybe have some struggles, you'll see parents making some different choices as the year unfolds. So any questions about the enrollment where we're at to date? Congratulations to our fishing team, our fishing league. They finished fifth out of 15 teams through their summer and early fall competition. And then special congratulations to Jackson Zender, who had the Angler of the Year award. And Levi Butke also finished with the same number of points. And this program really is supported by a huge number of volunteers and a very generous community that generates and donates money to keep the program going. It's a great opportunity for kids. It's a great lifelong activity and teaches them respect and appreciation for our environment. So hats off to Ethan Solan for his leadership in the program and to all of the boat captains and people that support this wonderful activity. I want to put a quick plug in for the Chromebook Protection Plan. It is only $15 per year. And we've really tried to keep those costs down so that it's affordable. But that will cover broken screens, et cetera, one of the more common things that can happen. And really, pretty reasonable, I think, the cost. If you are a family that applies for educational benefits and qualifies, then the price per student for that insurance drops down to $10 for families. So just put a plug in there. I think it's, I think it's a good investment.
What's the timeline to sign up for that?
Oh, it's coming about another week, maybe, Missy. It's a pretty, pretty tight timeline. And we'll get another notification out to families, letting them know that the window's closing. It's a great question. Lincoln Phase Two, this is probably more for the community than anything. The board has seen this work, other than to say, we had our pre-construction meeting last week out at the site. There were about 20 contractors present. And from there will come a timeline for the work. The demo will start here in another couple of weeks. And then the project is earmarked for completion right around the end of May, early June at this time. With the design, on the far right, there are four classrooms that have exterior access to windows. On the far, so that would be the east side of the building. On the west side of the building, there are another four classrooms there with exterior light coming in. And then right across from those western clump of four, there's two additional interior classrooms. The straight line on the, towards the bottom of the screen, that's the firewall that basically is separating preschool from what will be kindergarten. Our kindergarten students will eat in a separate area just outside the cafeteria. So the tables you see in kind of that lower right corner, that's where our kindergarten students will eat their lunch. Straight north of that basically is the media center, Title I services, ELL. There is one change to the plan, the way it's labeled right here. It was a great suggestion by one of our teachers. And the sensory room that's located just on top of the Title I kind of cluster, that's going to be moved over to the special ed cluster on the other side. And ESL or ELL will go next to the Title I services. Move that made a ton of sense. So both of those support areas basically have their own suites. And their services are just located very, in very close proximity. Towards the top of the screen, you see the elementary office. There's a conference room there. There's basically like a little nurse, nurse station in there. And then right above the library, that space that's labeled Computer Lab actually isn't planned to be a computer lab. It's more of a training room, meeting space, which we have very little of in the district. So for faculty meetings, et cetera, that will come in handy. The space that's just a little bit, uh, north and west of where the cafeteria seating is, is STEM area. So we'll have a large enough space for classrooms to meet, maybe a couple of classrooms, and do more hands-on types of projects. So. The very top left is the gymnasium, which will be shared with Early Childhood, ECFE preschool and Children's Corner. And then on the very top, on the right-hand side, all the mechanicals. And then in the upper right-hand corner, if you were looking at the photo of the property itself, that will be an area fenced off for the kindergarten playground. So it's exciting to see this get underway. We had a principals' meeting this morning and just talked about some of the planning that will need to go in to affect with the movement and stuff. And we believe that it'll be pretty effective to use the gymnasiums in a couple of the elementaries and possibly the cafeteria spaces to stage classroom materials. And so that will open up those rooms for a thorough deep cleaning before different teachers start moving into those and we move kindergarten over. So feel good about that. Outer Pride Night is coming up this Friday, September 15th. My appreciation for everyone that is involved with there. With that, we have a lot of students that volunteer their time working in the gold gym as well. And thanks to the 544 Foundation for the Taco in a Bag. We look forward to a beautiful evening and a chance to showcase our school. This one, there's a lot going on, on this table right here. But this is a snapshot of last spring MCA scores and how our school compared to our neighboring districts. And I need to point out a couple of things. If you look towards the left, you see math, reading and science on the far left. You see the grade levels right next to them. You see the state averages in, highlighted in gray. And then the first Fergus Falls piece you see as a district, those percentages include IQ Academy. When you skip over and look at the Fergus Falls one that says Cleveland, KSS, that would be our brick and mortar students. So, and I do believe that that would appropriately so include our ALC students as well. In order to try to compare apples to apples, so as you look at all of the little cells, they're labeled according to school district with their scores, our neighboring scores inserted in there. We're comparing basically the brick and mortar to their brick and mortar. The percentages don't differ maybe a ton in most cases. Some, it's a little significant between Fergus Falls District, including IQ and brick and mortar. But to be more apples to apples, we did brick and mortar to their brick and mortar. Where you see the maroon cells, those are areas where the Fergus Falls students outperformed that grade on that test of the comparison schools. Where you see the white cells would be a school district that had its students on that particular grade and test outperform our students. So it's, um, it's kind of interesting for us just to see how we stack up with some area schools. But by and large, we're essentially competing with ourselves, looking at our students' performance from the last year, or I actually prefer a little bit more of a longitudinal view. And then finding out based on curriculum, instruction, et cetera, how we can move the needle and get a higher percentage of our students proficient. While I'm on this screen, this is, we talked about the district goals today among the principals and the importance of attendance. And I'll simply say to the public that having your students in school every day, whether or not too sick to be here, is absolutely essential for us to get the highest proficiency results that we possibly can. Mark mentioned today, Principal Anderson, that when the figures come out for the high school attendance this year officially from the state, the high school is going to have somewhere between 50 and 60% average daily attendance. That is a jaw dropper. So in layman's terms, that means as a teacher steps up to start presenting the lesson, only six out of 10 or five out of 10 kids are sitting in the chairs to receive the instruction on average. So that's just something that we have to see improvement from and some greater support from the community and making sure that our kids are in school every day and attending class. Any questions about the grid up here? Or any other questions that you have for me? All right, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our general consent items. We have the minutes from our August 28th, 2023 board meeting. And then the bills and treasurers report with Kirby.
Yes, Natalie and I met before this meeting with Renee. And the treasurer's report, our beginning balance last month was just about 16 and a half million. We're actually up over 30 million right now. And the reason for that is a timing thing with our bond proceeds. We got about $11 million in bond proceeds in the first piece of that. And Renee, I think we're going to invest some of that short term until we need to start paying off some bills. And those bond proceeds would be important, the Lincoln Phase Two project. So if you take those out, we're sitting about 19 and a half million. So timing wise, we had a lot of receipts coming in, not quite as many bills going out. For instance, Community Ed is up from 24,000 up to 110,000. And that's primarily because of, we got all the ECFE income and also the school readiness in this month. So again, more receipts coming in than we had expenses going out on those. So that's what I have for the treasurer's report. So pretty good shape there. As we review the bills, because we're doing bills twice a month now instead of once a month, it goes a little bit quicker and there's a lot less volume. We looked at a couple of different things, public golf club for golf supplies and some tuition to various other districts that we share, share things with. We did some retro commissioning with CMTA here at KSS. Probably the biggest item was $313,000 to Metropolitan Mechanical. And that was the final bill on the, on the new AC system out here. About $20,000 on a boiler flange over at Roosevelt. And that one actually came with a picture. That was, boiler flange was about this big around and that was, it was leaking. So that was a substantial price tag, but something that had to be fixed because of it. We did about $45,000 to Epic or Tech Check for the Epic paging system. And we had some furniture, $3,000 or $4,000 over to Cleveland. Other than those, I think most of the bills were just, uh, just run of the mill, every month type thing. So. Unless there's any other questions, well, thank Natalie for coming in and thank Renee for having everything in order. She always does.
Any questions for Kirby?
Kirby, this will maybe not for you, but for more on just the food service. Now with, with students being able to eat both breakfast and lunch, have we seen it? Has Lance seen an increase in, in the volume that's going through our?
I would, I would confirm. Early for a prognostication, but yes, yes. And he thinks that the percentages for participation will continue to increase as the year gets rolling.
Sure.
Not just lunch, but breakfast too?
Breakfast, right.
Yes, Mark, I see.
Yeah, he was very happy.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to then personnel and faculty meeting.
Good evening, everyone. A little less on the personnel side right now for the 544 staff. We've been busy with the 935 staff in the meantime also, which isn't reflected in our agenda, obviously. Certified staff hires Kyle Owens, social studies teacher, contract increased to 1FTE. He was 1FTE last year. It was, it was a cut in the spring because we didn't know where the IQ numbers were. And that's where he just returned back to that 1FTE. And then Barb Puffman, she just had a And then Barb Hoffman, she just had a slight increase to our, slight change to her contract because she's part-time and how her days fall in the school year. So just a very small change with that. Support staff hires, we have Cassandra Swinson and Jasveen Walbotney, both will become or have become special ed career professionals depending on their start date here. Support staff contract change, Carrie Nguyen. She has made a request to have her work reduced to four days a week. She does work at our Lincoln School, so it does work that way, out that way and we did agree to that change. So she has just a change in her FTE for the new school year. Support staff resignations, we have Lori Jensen, second grad student nurse, effective October 13th, and then Sarah Marcus, special ed career professional, and that was effective September 4th. So I would request the board for approval on these items.
So could someone, could I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
So moved.
And then second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Our consent items are approved. We do not have any old business, so we'll move on to our new business. We have the 2023-24 IQ Academy Student Parent Handbook for approval. Could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have a memorandum of understanding between Fergus Falls School District and Fergus Falls Police Department assigning Kyle Bergeron as School Resource Officer, SRO, for the 2023-24 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Got some questions about that. I mean even Matt and I were looking at it before and he interpreted it one way and I interpreted it one way. It's just, so I just wanted to clarify what's going to happen. Does that mean that our SROs as we know them now are out and Kyle Bergeron is now the person that is in charge of bringing someone in? Or is there, what's going to happen?
So essentially, this will not result in any change of service with the SRO program to our school district. In fact, through some grant monies, we anticipate the possibility of having some additional SRO time on the elementary side, starting in October.
That's great.
The memorandum is in response to some legislative changes that occurred last spring and allows the department more flexibility in the utilization of their staff to meet the needs of our school.
Okay. So as long as it doesn't result in less SRO presence?
Don't want to affect that one bit.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then I'll move on to staff development proposal that Missy was referencing for the use and implementation of staff development funds for the 2023-24 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that proposal?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That proposal is approved. Then we have the M-Class Educator Digital Platform for K6 Reading Curriculum, effective 2023-24 through 2024-25 school years. Can I get a motion to approve that digital curriculum?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Is there, are we approving a cost to that?
Yes, the two-year cost, I think is it just under 16,000 dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now is there some state funding for that too, part of this with the new?
We're still awaiting, awaiting some guidance on that, but we believe so. This is directly related to the new reading legislation and will complement our work and actually save the teachers some time in implementing the interventions, et cetera.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. And then we have a few agreements here between our Lincoln Phase Two project. So our first one is agreement between Lake Country Mechanical, Inc., contractor, Ari Morton and Associates LLC, the construction manager, and Zerberg Architects, architect, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for Phase Two Lincoln Project dash 23A plumbing and HVAC from L&amp;M. Negative motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Is there anything on, that we know more about the permit for plumbing? Has that been approved now or does it take a couple of weeks?
They just applied for it recently. There was a communication piece between the engineer and Zerberg and so they just recently applied for it. Their understanding is the state is 10 to 12 weeks out on those process, setting those permits. Brian did contact me mid-week last week and apologized for the error that took place, but did indicate that it should not really alter the completion schedule for the project.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. Then our next one is an agreement between Minco Construction, Inc., as the contractor, Ari Morton and Associates LLC, as our construction manager, and Zerberg Architects, the architect, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for Phase Two Lincoln Project dash 10A signage from L&amp;M. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. And then we have an agreement between Summit Fire Protection, the contractor, Ari Morton and Associates LLC, construction manager, and Zerberg Architects, architect, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project dash 21A fire protection system, L&amp;M. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Agreement is approved. So our next meeting, our next regular school board meeting is Monday, September 25th, 2023 at 5:15 here in the community room. And we have two items on our work session and a little bit of personnel and some facilities conversation. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.